Go ahead and call the meeting to order. Thank you all for being here. If you're able, please rise and join me in our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, what a great turnout. Thank you all for taking the time to be here today. Um, we are going to do a proclamation. And introduce what we're up to. Commissioner Boyce is going to read the proclamation. Uh, we're gonna have Tamara and Cory call some folks up to take photos. You all know the photo drill. You've been here before. Uh, and then we're going to present some certificates. Uh, and then I'm gonna ask some of you all to speak a little bit about um, some of the work you're doing uh, for veterans and to honor uh, our military families here in Douglas County. So, um, it's always a great day when we get to recognize our veteran community. For several years, we've set aside a day to honor our veterans uh, in the annual Douglas County Veterans Day Parade. This year, we're proclaiming and celebrating the entire month of November in honor of our veterans. As well as paying tribute to our military families for the immense sacrifice they make while their loved ones serve in the US Armed Forces. We will, of course, uh, still recognize and promote our esteemed 70th Annual Douglas County Veterans Day Parade. Seventy years. The parade planning committee, our veterans and our faithful volunteers for their hard work and putting on Oregon's Greatest Veterans Day Parade. And there has actually been years where it was the largest Veterans Day Parade also. The Douglas County Veterans Day Parade will take place on Tuesday, November 11th, twenty twenty-five at eleven AM in downtown Roseburg. In addition to this proclamation, the commissioners are proud to announce that Douglas County will once again be participating in Operation Green Light. During the month of November, Veterans and Military Families Month, the front of the Douglas County Courthouse will be illuminated with green lights to show our appreciation and support for our veterans and their families. We encourage everybody to shine a light of hope and support for our veterans by placing green lights on their porch or outside. The green lights on the courthouse will remain on display throughout the end of November. Along with the proclamation, this is, this gesture provides credence to our community, to our county motto. In Douglas County, we honor veterans. Uh, I will have Commissioner Boyce read the proclamation, and then we would like to present the certificates uh, of the proclamation to our guests and take some photos. After the certificates are um, presented again, I will ask some um, of our veterans' guests to speak. Mr. Boyce, Commissioner Boyce, could you please read the proclamation?
Sure. But before I do, I was just gonna make an observation. You know, even the pledge of allegiance is better when we have a room full of veterans. So this is a proclamation recognizing November as Veterans and Military Families Month in Douglas County. Whereas throughout the nation's history, courageous men and women have donned the uniform of the United States Armed Forces, building a noble tradition of faithful and dedicated service to our country. And that the freedoms we enjoy as Americans have been purchased and protected at an immeasurably high price paid by those who have served and continue to serve in defense of liberty. And whereas Veterans Day, originally known as Armistice Day, is a federal holiday set aside to honor the contributions of veterans and their families toward peace and freedom. It is observed annually on November 11th commemorating the armistice that ended World War One in nineteen eighteen. The eleventh hour of the eleventh day of the eleventh month. The first Armistice Day was observed on November 11th, nineteen nineteen at the request of President Woodrow Wilson. And in nineteen fifty-four, at the urging of major US veterans organizations, it was renamed Veterans Day to honor all who have served in the United States Armed Forces. And whereas November was first designated as Military Family Month in nineteen ninety-six, serving as a time recognized from, a time to recognize the tremendous sacrifices made by our military families who faced the challenges of separation, relocation, and the uncertainty of service life. We owe them a deep debt of gratitude for their steadfast support of our troops, veterans, and fellow military families. And whereas since the founding of our nation, Americans have been willing to fight and when necessary, die to preserve the individual rights guaranteed to the United States Constitution and the Bill of Rights. We can never fully repay the debt we owe to those heroic men and women who have served, been wounded, or given their lives in defense of our great nation. And whereas as a tribute to our veterans, veterans organizations and their families, we will be participating in Operation Green Light and illuminating the front of Douglas County Courthouse green for the month of November. This gesture recognizes veterans as a vital part of the fabric of our communities, contributing not only through service, but as an enduring economic and civic asset. And whereas Douglas County, with the support of countless volunteers, proudly hosts the renowned Douglas County Veterans Day Parade, affectionately known as Oregon's Greatest Veterans Day Parade, to honor and salute our veterans. As a grateful nation remembers this year, we will pay tribute to seventeen seventy-five to two thousand twenty-five. Two hundred and fifty years of military excellence. The twenty twenty-five Douglas County Veterans Day Parade will be held in downtown Roseburg on Tuesday, November 11th, twenty twenty-five, starting at eleven AM. And now therefore, we, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November as Veterans and Military Families Month in Douglas County and pledge our unwavering support for all veterans and military families. We encourage our citizens to attend the Douglas County Veterans Day Parade and find inspiration in the courage, heroism, and dedication of our military service members and their families, past and present. Their sacrifices continue to safeguard our freedoms and uphold the promise of liberty for generations to come. Please remember to honor them today and every day for their service.
Here, here.
All right, we're gonna start off with our um, Veterans Day Parade Committee. So if you are a member of our Veterans Day Parade Committee, we ask you to please come forward. Eric Bagwell, Carol Hunt, Mary Keys, Larry Hill, Ron Dukes, Steve Keeney, Dave West, and Dan Lewis. Mary, can you turn yours around so we can see it? Okay, there we go.
Right up here, ready? Smile. You have my phone. Back up. Okay, ready? Spread over here. Smile. It comes down with me.
Any of these you wanna do, just jump in.
Just come stand. Okay. Look straight ahead so we can watch. There you go. Smile.
There you go.
So next we have our um, let's see, our Vietnam Veterans of America, chapter eight oh five. It's probably everybody in the room, isn't it? Come on, everybody.
Some down here, some up above.
I know, they should be.
You're still being from.
Oh, that's, that's fine.
Okay, which is Thursday, tomorrow, yeah.
Can we get us all in this picture?
Just so you know, if you can see my face, then the camera can see you.
Perfect. That picture much better.
Ready? Smile.
He's warning us, I guess.
Yes, I am. Okay, ready? Do you like to have the, right here's a good spot.
There we go.
Way to get this group quiet, isn't it?
Some of the sheriffs.
All right, so next up on our list, before we get to military families and some other branches of the military, um, we wanted to bring up our county employees that are veterans. So if our county employees could come up that are veterans, and also Mary, who is a um, our VSO officer. So, come on, come on, Tyler.
Including the sheriffs.
Is she, including?
These are veterans too, please.
Right up here. Smile. Ready? Smile.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I got a good time.
You gotta get our. Next on our list, we have um, those that are members of our VFW or American Legion, um, that have not been up here.
We've been up to.
And anybody that's here representing um, any of our other conflicts, World War One, World War Two.
Yes, well, any, any other veterans that haven't come up with the groups already, who have before?
Uh, come on up.
And unless anybody gets.
Come on up. And, oh, women veterans too.
Oh, yes, I see. Come on, come on. We're, we're gonna have you guys come separately. Come on up this time too, for the veterans. Yeah, come on. We want, we want to just make sure that's the veterans you got. See all the great stuff you're out there doing. Thank you. You're doing good.
Is it right here? Smile. Ready? Smile. All right, thank you.
So.
No way.
Yeah.
All right, so we would like to recognize um, members of military families. So if you are a member of a military family, a spouse, a child, and that, we would love to have you come up.
Elena?
Elena. Yes, yes.
Take your picture.
You're getting better.
Yeah. Any, any members of auxiliaries or um, that group, we'd love to have you come up.
Looks like you're making two there, but I'm not sure. It's pretty much. Minus the three commissioners.
All right, thank you. Now, we wanna group picture with everybody. So, let's get everybody. One big one.
My goodness.
The ladies come up front. The gentleman going back.
Yep, we're gonna get several up top, the taller. The ones that wanna hide.
Please.
I'll stand up here by you guys.
Got to hit one of those.
Much appreciated.
I have the drone around.
How are you doing?
Sorry. See, we're short guys.
Yeah, let's have you.
On my mind.
Let's have you change.
Yeah. I'm gonna get that hat in the picture.
You bet. I love that hat.
I love that hat.
Not see the gentleman.
You need to drop down a little bit.
Just making sure if you can see my face, the camera can see yours. If you three, it's good over just here to the left.
I said fly the drone around, that'd be good. Probably end up buying a new drone, I'm sure.
Ready, look up here. One, two, three. Oh, my phone cans wider. Okay, ready? Smile. All right, you want to do a nice review?
All right. All good?
Alrighty.
Thank you, everyone.
Once they crash, you gotta get a new one. So again, we're gonna have a couple people get up and uh, visit a little bit about what their organizations are working on and um, some of the great work that's happening. I'd like to start with the uh, parade committee. Eric Bagwell, I believe is the chair. Come up and uh, give us an update. That's coming right up. We're ready.
We're ready too. Thank you for having us, and thank you for the proclamation on behalf of the parade committee. This again is our seventieth year. Uh, we're doing a couple things different this year. Uh, traditionally, we would have a grand marshal group out of the veterans community. Last year was our Vietnam veterans. Because it's the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of our military, we're not having grand marshals. We're honoring the whole past history of our military. Two hundred and fifty years of excellence. We're also doing something. We're trying to get this worked out. Not only we're looking to the past, we're looking to the future. We're working with recruiters. We're trying to get the kids that are in the delayed enlistment program and have them in the parade to show the future of our military. So that's the things we're doing, we're working on. We did get, we did find out, we again this year, for the seventieth year, was recognized by the Veterans National Committee as a regional site again. Uh, we've managed to keep that one running, and we are still, we got that one. They didn't say how many they gave out, but last year they only gave out like sixty-one, I think it was.
There's not very many.
But not many, so we.
For the whole nation, yeah.
The whole nation. So we are being recognized nationally for our event, so it's very, very exciting to be part of, so. But that's what we got going on this year.
We know it's a lot of work and appreciate you and the committee and everybody that, that puts it on and everybody that participates.
And we've actually got a lot of people stepping up. We've put out a plea for some help to the day of the parade, and we actually have some help coming in. So we have a few extra bot boots on the ground to get some things done as far as staging and stuff, so.
Our little piece isn't important until it is important. So we're, we're doing the porta potties again here on the court house.
We appreciate that.
So for certain group of people, that becomes pretty important, so.
That's when I had any questions.
All right, thank you. Let's see if uh, Bill Duncan has a few words to say from the Vietnam Veterans of America.
Thank you, commissioners. Recently, I've had a lot of time to think, and uh, I thought back a lot, just sitting here, about my time in the combat zone and what it was like to count on everybody that's around you. When everything is happening, coming down, well, I had my band of brothers. And I wanna thank the Vietnam Veterans of America from bottom of my heart, what they've shown me in the last three months. They have been my band of brothers and my support. And so, whenever this veteran thing happens, you know, I volunteered as fireman for thirty-seven years in Murfreesboro. I didn't think I was ever gonna get over that, until I joined this veterans group. So I can't say enough about the people that are here and how they continue to serve their country, whether it's American, uh, the VFW, the American Legion, or Vietnam veterans. Just a hell of a great bunch of band of brothers. So I can say this publicly to my people, thank you from bottom of my heart. I'm with you guys. Thank you.
Elena, would you like to talk a little bit about some of the great work you're doing for veterans in our community?
Sure. Um, so my name is Elena, lining up for those of you who don't know me, so I run a nonprofit for veterans, Source One Serenity. Um, our mission statement is to empower veterans to uh, regain their purpose and build community. Our primary activities are around outdoor recreation, because we believe in the healing power of nature, and also on purpose-driven projects like trail work. Or this year, for example, we actually had um, not only trail work um, on public lands, but we also did some uh, building some structures. Uh, one of them was completing a Reynold Shelter. So uh, for those of the hunters, they probably know uh, this place, Reynold Ridge in the Amco National Forest. So uh, that uh, Reynold Shelter uh, was uh, built actually in nineteen thirties and uh, so by triple Cs, uh, but it burned uh, by human error in two thousand eighteen. Um, so in any case, we had um, some, so we had a Navy veteran who led this effort to rebuild this forest shelter, and it was complete. And so of course, it was really amazing to see the community coming together and helping with this effort. Um, we also uh, this year, uh, did another uh, structure. Um, so this time to honor um, Frank, Frank and Jeannie Moore. So Frank, for those of you who don't know, but Frank is a World War Two veteran who survived Normandy. And uh, he has built, uh, he has left such a legacy, um, including the uh, Frank and Jeannie Moore Wild Steelhead Sanctuary, which is a one hundred acres area in the Amco National Forest. So uh, um, local veterans, um, rusty and renty, so they built a bench, a massive oak bench that was uh, placed at Steambodian, and Steambodian is, is another legacy from uh, Frank and Jeannie, because they were the founders of Steambodian. So, um, yeah, otherwise, um, we do different uh, activities for veterans. Uh, um, fishing and uh, just uh, just spending time outside, outdoors. Um, all our activities are on our website, but we are also are grateful for the collaboration with the county about our running for us to run a composting facility at the glide transfer site. We are really grateful for all the support to the county and the commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you. Cecilia, would you like to say a few words? I know this is your favorite thing. Your organization's pretty important, and we wanna hear from you.
So I don't have anything prepared, but uh, a little bit about our organization, the American Women Veterans Association. Uh, right now, we have veterans from the Korean era to current eras. And so, um, it's quite interesting to try and get everybody to do things, because they're not as mobile as they used to be. But they have, they still have the energy for the, that they always have had to be involved and get into things. So we're really looking forward to the parade, and I hope to see everybody.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Uh, Ron Dukes, Non-Commissioner Officer Association. Talk a little bit maybe about your medallion program. It's fantastic.
I was hoping you would invite me, commissioners. Thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak to you today. And I wanted to highlight the, you know, Non-Commissioner Officer Association's Legacy Medallion Program. As such, we go around Douglas County presenting medallions to our veterans. From World War Two, Korea, Vietnam, Cold War, and Global War and Terrorism. Our two newest medallions are the last two I mentioned. As such, with these medallions, we go around Douglas County. We'd be in the NCO Association as members. There's about a dozen of us that present these to veterans in so many venues, at parks, in their beds, when they can't get out of them. We go to homes. I have a World War Two medallion presented this afternoon at one thirty at Callahan Village. We go where we can, with your help as well, sir, to be able to help us make this program work. And as such, we have been proud to say that the Vietnam Veterans of America have already sponsored a hundred and twenty medallions to this date, to help us make this program work. Without their work, without their help, we never would've made it. We never would've made it. And the dozen of us, including Mary Newman, she gets out there with us, and Carol Hunt, and Neil, Neil, Neil here today? They help us, and he, he can present one at funerals. And if, they hired me, they've been VVA, has hired me to be their chaplain at funerals for veterans. And I try to catch every World War Two and Korean veteran, because we don't have the funds to do all of them. We at least get them and their families, recognize or start a legacy in their families, to use this medallion as a kickstart to take those medallions, or those medals and awards they received during their wars out of their drawers into their families and tell their stories, to their children and grandchildren. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank, thank you for that work. That was amazing. Rick Scapiti, would you like to talk a little bit about your organization? Perboard?
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, it's a real honor to be here. Military Order, the Purple Heart, used to have a chapter in Douglas County, chapter five thirty-nine, and uh, because there are not very many uh, veterans that have been awarded the Purple Heart, and the lack of attendance, and a lot of those World War Two veterans and Korean veterans have passed away. We consolidated with chapter one forty-seven out of Medford. And chapter one forty-seven is basically covering all of southwest Oregon. So all Purple Heart recipients, um, that belong to the chapter are in the, you know, five to seven counties in this area. So, you know, we're active, um, we participate in the sportsman shows. We're gonna be there again this year out at the fairgrounds. Um, we've started a new scholarship program that we're offering a college or some sort of a career counseling uh, type program, scholarship. You know, we stay active legislatively. I was recently the uh, I was recently the legislative advisor for Region Three where we work in Washington DC to advocate for veterans benefits. So it's an honor. Thank you so much for this proclamation.
Rick, that's just one of the many things you do for veterans. Thank you very much. Just a couple more. I'd like to have Dan Loomis come forward and talk a little bit about what he does visiting veterans in the hospital, which is a pretty amazing thing. And I know others do that too, but if you'd talk a little bit about that work you do.
Commissioner, I appreciate it. Um, I didn't prepare, but there's a effort through Mercy Hospital, CHI Mercy, where volunteers are assigned to visit veterans on a daily basis. I do Mondays and there's some other veterans or volunteers that visit veterans on the other days of the week. Uh, but it's an outreach to make sure that veterans are first honored. And making sure the staff at Mercy knows that they are veteran. We leave a flag in their room, put a magnet on the outside of the door. Making sure that all the staff knows that they are veterans and so the other staff also honors them. Uh, but also we give them important information about entitlements, benefits, how to file disability claims, activities for veterans through Source One Serenity. And important information about those types of benefits. And the interactions that us volunteers have with the veterans is overwhelmingly positive. Those veterans are encouraged because they get to speak to a fellow veteran or somebody that understands veteran issues and their, their day is brightened. Uh, and we just treasure every interaction that we get to have with the veterans.
Well, Dan, thank you and thank you for explaining that. I don't think a lot of people know that happens. Uh, and it's pretty, uh, pretty important to those folks that are, those veterans that end up in the hospital, especially with what's happened with our VA hospital, they end up in Mercy. Uh, and making sure that they are recognized as veterans and honored and that the folks that work at Mercy know the patients, the veterans are really important. So thank you for doing that.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
Last on my list, who can never miss the chance to allow an opportunity to speak is Mr. Little.
Everybody get comfortable.
Even, even after the last joke you told, I'm still letting you speak today.
Well, thank you, commissioners, for this wonderful proclamation. When I joined the Navy 65 years ago, the slogan was "Join the Navy and See the World." And I did that. I got to be at the Cuban Missile Blockade. I got to be at the Gulf of Tonkin at the start of the Vietnam War. I got to see most of the countries in Europe and Asia, most of the, most of the states as well. And I often tell people that Douglas County is the best part of the world that I have seen, the best place to be. And I've also often said that the "We Honor Veterans" sign on our county signs should be gold-plated. Maybe some of our special service guys could sneak out there at night sometime and paint those gold because they are truly golden. I think of the war memorial outside, the way it's been refurbished. I think of the Wreaths Across America event and the wonderful Veterans Day Parade. I know Doty Blessing and Kirk Christman are looking down, smiling because of the wonderful way that that's going. And there's so many other events that the commissioners here are involved in. And that honor has to begin here. I, uh, I feel that you don't get the recognition you truly, truly deserve because this is absolutely the best part of the world and I truly mean that. Also, my wife has a hat that says Navy Wife, the hardest job in the Navy. And that goes to the Army, Marine Corps and all the rest. Were it not for them, we certainly would not have been able to serve as we did. So God bless all you wonderful spouses. And I guess in the Bible, there's a statement that's probably the ultimate of appreciation and thanks. And that's when the Lord says, "Well done, thou good and faithful servant." And that's the way I feel towards this board of commissioners. "Well done, thou good and faithful servant." Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Say a few words?
Just thank you guys a bunch for all that you do. It's, uh, it's an honor to, to serve veterans. I was, I'm not a veteran, but I, I feel like you guys have included me in a lot of your activities and I feel grateful for that and a chance to give back. One of the couple things I was gonna mention is super excited to hear about the steamboat shelter up there, the Reynolds Shelter. I mean, we, uh, for years and years and years, our annual Christmas tree run, a bunch of guys get together in our jeeps and we go head up and hang out at the Reynolds Shelter and get our Christmas trees. And when we found out that it burned down, it was tragic, so I'm very familiar with it. I would love to, I'm gonna go make it a point to go back up and see it again, so excited about that. And then your Source One Serenity. I am an adventurer and that's what I do. I'm not a licensed fishing guide or anything, but I'm an avid fisherman and hunter. And if I could take veterans to go do those things, I would love to do it. So put me on your volunteer list. Uh, Wreaths Across America is coming fast. It's, uh, some of you in the room will start getting phone calls from us at the committee. We're excited about it. As you well know, we reached our benchmark again very easily. So we're, uh, as far as fundraising goes, we're already working on next year. So this year's logistics planning and it's been great. We're planning to have a float in the parade again, so I'm excited about that. And we'll see you guys all out there. Thank you for everything you do.
Thank you, Commissioner Boyce. Commissioner Chris?
Want to thank everybody for coming. It's always, we do these things, it's a lot of fun and they're always really well attended. I mean, you guys come in force in everything you do, from community projects to things like this. It's just always a wonderful turnout. Great bunch of people. So thank you for everything you do.
I'll finish with, as brief as I can be. Thank you for your service and welcome home. We'll take a five-minute recess and then we'll get on to the meeting. Go ahead with our agenda. That wasn't quite five minutes, but the room cleared out pretty quick. So, um, next item on the agenda is our consent agenda and this is some reappointments. Oh, I'm sorry. From recess. Next agenda item is the consent agenda. It's just some reappointments. I will move to approve the consent agenda.
Motion second.
A motion of second. Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Agenda item number three is citizens' questions or comments. Anybody online?
Nobody online.
Anybody here in the room like to come forward? Seeing none, we'll move to agenda item number four. This is a clerk's office item. I'll invite up the Douglas County Clerk, Dan Loomis.
Good morning, commissioners. For record, Dan Loomis, Douglas County Clerk. I appreciate the opportunity to bring this contract modification. It is the second modification-
Yeah, hang on just a minute. Yeah, see if they can close the hall a little bit. I think our microphone doesn't pick them up, but it's... Should get them in. Go ahead.
A second contract modification to contract 30000866 between Douglas County and Helion Software Incorporated. Uh, to add property recording alert service, we call it PRAS, to the contract for an annual cost of $1,500 a year. This free service helps residents stay informed about recording activities related to their land records, deeds, providing an added peace of mind and transparency. PRAS provides timely and automated email alerts to property owners when new documents, deeds, are recorded under monitored names. Each alert includes a direct link to view the information about the recorded documents.
Right.
Would move to approve this contract modification and appreciate you adding such vital service. A lot of people will be interested in this.
For your information, a thousand in the first two days.
My second.
So a motion of second, questions and further comments? So I, I like this because there is, um, some small risk out there of problems happening. And because there's some small risk, there seems to be some organizations that have taken advantage of that and are selling products to people that they may not need to purchase. This will, will allow people to get that security without having to, you know, go out and purchase from a private or third party. So I appreciate you doing that. Any other questions or comments? Uh, seeing that, I'll call the question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is a human resource department item and I'll invite up our human resource director, Michael Kurtz.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm here to recommend that the board of commissioners ratify a two-year collective bargaining agreement, retroactive July 1st, 2025, and expiring June 30th, 2027. And this is with the Douglas County Sheriff's Office Communications Supervisors Association. So this is the line supervisors in the 911 Communications Division of the Sheriff's Department. This agreement includes an annual cost of living allowance of 3% in both the first and second year of the contract, as well as a 3% market adjustment in the first year of the contract. This is a new bargaining unit, so if ratified by the board, this would be the initial contract with this labor union. The terms and conditions of this agreement have been reviewed by the Sheriff's Office, the Management Finance Department, the Human Resources Department, and has been ratified by the Communications Supervisors Association membership.
Move to approve the collective bargaining agreement.
I'll second that.
We have a motion of second. Uh, one thing you said, and I want to make sure everybody heard it, is uniquely, we are doing a retroactive on this, but it's because they're a new bargaining unit and you weren't able to bargain in time prior to the, to the start of the contract. So sort of uniquely, we're doing a retroactive. Normally, we don't do that. So thank you for getting this done. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Agenda item number six is a juvenile department item and I'll have Corey Tate come up, please.
Good morning, commissioners. Corey Tate, Lipstick Coordinator, Houston Juvenile. Uh, before you, is a justice reinvestment program grant agreement between Douglas County and the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission in the amount of $1,767,436 for the 2025-27 biennium. This grant helps the RSAT program in the jail, transitional housing, and provides funds for victim services. This is also meant to reduce recidivism through evidence-based practices and decrease prison utilization for property, drug, and driving offenses while improving public safety and holding individuals accountable.
Approve the grant agreement. My second.
A motion of second. Questions or comments? Uh, I am gonna abstain on this. I do this every time and just to make it clear, I serve on the State of Oregon's Criminal Justice Commission. Uh, when we do our grant awards from the Criminal Justice Commission, when we vote on them there, each of the Criminal Justice Commission members that has an affiliation with the county, we abstain at that end. So there's no question about our motives and what we're doing there. And then when the money comes into the county, I will also abstain out of an abundance of caution that there's no financial gain or detriment. It's not technically a conflict, but just, um, just because it's been past practice and I don't want anybody to believe we're doing anything wrong. So I'm gonna be abstaining on this one. Any other questions and comments? We got a motion of second. I'll call the question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Chris?
Aye.
Chair is gonna abstain. The motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven is a Parks Department item. I believe Commissioner Boyce is gonna take care of this one. It's just a grant agreement.
Yeah, this is a grant agreement. It's actually money that came from the Federal Department of Fish and Wildlife through the Department of Agriculture, to the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife, and through the Oregon State Marine Board as a partner to replace the docks and renovate the parking areas at Cooper Creek Reservoir, both the east and west ends of the reservoir. Move to approve the grant agreement.
I'll second that.
A motion of second. Questions or comments?
Just make a comment that I, I, you know, appreciate that we continually do this, even though this, you know, costs the county some money. You know, these things are, these docks and whatnot are so well utilized, you know, so many people use them. Uh, they don't last very long because of just the weather and everything else. I'm glad we're keeping up on them and keeping them safe and usable. So I appreciate you for that work.
Well, I would also add to that. I, I grew up over in Oakland, Southern Oakland area and going to Cooper Creek was really something we did a lot. The facilities there, it's an interesting partnership. That is the Southern Water Control District. Uh, and we work with them to have our Parks Department have, um, you know, not only parks, but these, these docks and parking lots. So, uh, it's very, very much used over there. And, um, we were up there for the Fish and Derby Kids' Day this last year and the docks are definitely an end of life, so time for new ones, so. Any more questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Agenda item number eight is a Parks Department item. Commissioner Boyce?
Chair, this is Parks Director Mark Wall asking the board to approve a resolution granting permission for him to apply for an ATV equipment grant from the Oregon Parks and Recreation Department. We have utilized this grant opportunity several times in the past to purchase the equipment used primarily at the coast that we use for our operations at the Dunes and I move to approve the resolution.
I'll second that.
A motion of second. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call the question. Commissioner Boyce?
Aye.
Commissioner Chris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye and the motion passes. Uh, agenda item number nine is commissioner comments. Commissioner Boyce?
It's always a good day to have a commissioners meeting when it's full of veterans. I'm grateful for those guys.
It's great that they show up. Commissioner Chris?
Just muted. Thanks.
Yeah, I have nothing also, so I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for being here.